I will now ask each candidate to introduce themselves, starting with Mayor Buttigieg.
Alright, my name is Pete Buttigieg. You can say it with me because it's a little hard to say. F-U-T-I-G-E-G-H. I'm a 38-year-old mayor from South Bend, Indiana. I'm a Navy veteran, and I'm your best option for the Democratic nominee of 2020. So Pete Buttigieg, Democratic nominee, 2020. That's all you want to know.
Vice President Biden.
Good morning. My name is Joe Biden. I am the fifth youngest senator in entire U.S. history. I served eight years under the Obama administration as your vice president, and now I'm asking for your vote to become the next U.S. president. Thank you so much.
Senator Warren.
Hello, everyone. I was a former teacher, Harvard Law professor, and U.S. senator since 2013, and I am running to be your first female president.
Senator Sanders.
Good morning, students of Parsippany Hills High School. I am Bernie Sanders, current senator of Vermont, former governor of Vermont, and I also served 16 years in the House of Representatives, and I am running to be your next Democratic presidential candidate for the 2020 election.
Governor Weld.
Hello, everyone. I am William Weld or Bill Weld, whatever you want to call me, and I was the governor of Massachusetts, I was the former ambassador to Mexico, and I've been in politics my entire life. Vote William Weld for the presidential nominee for the Republican Party, 2020.
President Trump.
Hi, guys. I'm President Donald Trump, and I'm running for reelection for the Republican Party.
My first question to Mayor Buttigieg is, many Americans are frustrated by the political divisions in our country. What steps would you take to make our democracy work better, and how would you make that happen? You have two minutes to respond.
Okay, so first and foremost, I'd like to clarify that everyone in this room is an American, and it doesn't matter whether you're black or white, whether you're gay or straight, whether you're a Democrat or a Republican, because in the end, what we all want is what's best for this country. But it'd be naive to say that we're not living in one of the most divisive moments in our nation's history. Right now, we have a president who's driving people further to the left and further to the right, and in response to that, the Democratic Party has decided to run candidates like Sanders, who are also extremists pushing people further to the left or further to the right. And I genuinely believe that the more extreme we get, the more divided we become. So that's why I'm running as a moderate Democrat, so that I can bring people closer together instead of driving them apart. My experience in the military taught me a lot, and one of the things that it taught me is that it doesn't matter if the guy who rode my left or to my right is a Democrat or a Republican. What matters is that they're American. What matters is that they have my back, and I want to bring that feeling back to you guys. I want to have your back. I'm going to reintroduce bipartisanship into the government. I'm going to be a moderate. I'm going to communicate with the other side instead of fight against them. I'm going to fight for you, and not just the uber wealthy or the uber vulnerable. I'm going to fight for everyone equally. I'm going to fight for you. I'm going to fight for you. I'm going to fight for the USC shirt back there, jean jacket, Mr. Kim in the back, Mrs. Estable. I don't care who you are because I'm fighting for you. I'm fighting for everyone. I'm not as divisive as these candidates. You guys are all young kids, let's be honest. I'm 38-years-old. 77, 70, 78, 75. I don't even know how old Trump is, but knowing he has fake hairs, it doesn't matter. They can't understand you as well as I can, so I'll fight for you, and I'll bring people together better than they will. I'm your best option. I'm Pete Buttigieg. I'm a strong leader. I'm a competent leader, and I'm the next president of the United States of America. Pete Buttigieg, 2020.
Vice President Biden, you have two minutes. Oh, sorry. My bad. We will now take the first question from Dev Josh for Mayor Buttigieg.
How do you think your sexuality will affect the electorate and potentially affect the effect it will have over America?
Alright, so I'm using microphone now because I'm a little tired, but that's a great question. For those of you who don't know, I, Pete Buttigieg, am an openly gay man. I ran for reelection in Indiana as an openly gay man and won, and I think that that quality is something that defines me, but it doesn't necessarily need to be something that defines America, because it doesn't matter in America whether you're gay or whether you're straight, whether you're black or whether you're white. Like I just said, it matters that we're American. So I think it's great that the LGBTQ+ community is going to have more representation through me. I think it's great that I can overcome the obstacles and show resilience through adversity despite some of the challenges that accompany my sexuality. I think that's a great point, but I think what really matters is that I'll be bringing people together. I won't be separating myself into a category. I won't be, you know, some president only for one group of people. I'll be a president for everyone. So in the long run, I think that really it doesn't matter, because what matters is that I'm for everyone. Thank you.
We will now be taking a question from the audience for Mayor Buttigieg. Does anyone have a question for Mayor Buttigieg?
Arnold.
How can you say you're fighting for everyone, not just the uber wealthy, when your campaign is funded by 40 billionaires?
Alright, so let me explain that one to you. That's a great question. I don't take any donations from super PACs. I don't take any donations from federal lobbyists. I don't take any donations from corporation PACs, and that's because I want to keep my campaign clean. A lot of people have brought up these points, but they failed to mention that other candidates do that too. They failed to mention that just because a group of people supports me doesn't mean that other groups of people don't support me as well. The vast majority of my donations come in smaller sums of money. They do not come from billionaires. They come from average people like you, because I'm fighting for you, but like I said, I'm not excluding anyone else. I'm fighting for everyone. So just because one group of people thinks that I'm a good candidate doesn't mean it's not true. Alright, that's that. Thank you for your question. That is a great question, Arnold.
Vice President Biden, you have two minutes. You have two minutes to respond to the question.
Thank you so much. So I understand your frustration with this current political divide that Trump has helped to insinuate in our nation. You have Trump saying that Mexicans are rapists, praising neo-Nazis, saying that African-Americans cause the majority of white American murders. How is this a president that actually helps to combine and fuel this divide? This president fuels this divide even further. And while candidates up here like Pete Buttigieg perfectly exemplified by coming up here and discriminating against my age by fueling this divide, I'd rather focus on bipartisan issues that directly affect each and every individual sitting in this room today. You guys don't care about this empty rhetoric of being to the left, being to the right. What you guys care about in the end of the day is that when you go to college, after college, whether you're going to have affordable education, whether you'll be burdened by an amount of debt that you'll spend your entire lives having to pay off. What you care about is that when you go to your school, your church, synagogue, what you care about is that you will not have to fear about the potential of a shooting due to the government's failure to protect you from guns on the streets. What you care about is that when you grow up, that you have a bright future ahead of you, one that is not burdened by the effects of climate change. These are things that directly affect you as an electorate, and you guys do not care about this political rhetoric that divides us even further. That is why I'm asking for your vote today, and together, we can restore the soul of our nation. Thank you.
The first question from the audience comes from Desha Patel.
My question was basically, what's your policy on jail time reforms? Like, what do you want to do if jail people are incarcerated?
Thank you so much. So I would rather focus on getting rid of lowering the jail time, because we have to focus on rehabilitation rather than punishing the people for their wrongdoings. By doing so, our whole country was founded on this idea of we give a great chance and opportunity, and to not give opportunities to people who are in, who are serving jail time is a disgrace as a nation. We should be helping to, whether that be for health reforms, if people are getting into prisons because of drug addiction, we should be helping to rehabilitate them out of this, to give them treatment in the end of the day, because that is what our nation was founded upon. It was founded on empathy and compassion. Thank you.
We will be taking a second question from the audience. Does anyone have a question for Vice President Biden?
So you've talked about restoring the soul of our nation, but during the 2012 presidential election, you said that Mitt Romney wanted to put black people back in chains, and you've also said that poor kids can be just as good as white kids. So how can you claim to be for the soul of our nation when you've said such divisive things?
So I don't think it's divisive if it's true. So that's the thing. When we're talking about Mitt Romney and we're talking about other, but not about the poor, not about that, but when we're talking about Mitt Romney and how he is dividing our nation further, it is rhetoric that is identifying a problem, and we're putting enough potential solutions. But when you're saying like Trump, when you're saying that Mexicans, all Mexicans are rapists, when you're praising neo-Nazis, when you're saying that immigrants, and you're scapegoating immigrants as a minority, as a group, coming to our nation, that is when I stop and I say that you cannot say such divisive words, whereas it has no factual basis. So when you're talking, to answer your question, when I did say this rhetoric, it was to direct the attention of the American public to the issues that were not being addressed. And yes, I do, I have openly apologized for rhetoric that I've stated, but at the same time, you don't see Trump apologizing for his mistakes, and that's the problem here. Thank you.
Senator Warren, you have two minutes to respond to my opening question.
I would just like to first of all, thank all of you, thank all of you great citizens for being here to learn more about each and every one of these candidates standing before you and more about the election process. Before me, I see future doctors, lawyers, teachers, entrepreneurs, anything that you can imagine, anything that you want to be, I see that before me. But I also see citizens that are growing up in a country that is politically divided, not only between the Republicans and the Democrats, but between the people and its government. It is the government's job, my job, to restore your faith in the government and protect you, the American people, and in doing so, we will bridge the divide, and this is how we will go about doing it. Number one, I want to defend and create American jobs here in our home country. Number two, I want to raise the federal minimum wage to about $15 an hour. How many of you would like that increase on your paycheck at the end of the month? Yeah? That's what I thought. Number three, I want to create taxes on the ultra-millionaires, on the corrupt corporations that are squeezing money out of the government. No more taxes on the middle class, no more taxes on you. Number four, I want to implement a universal Medicare plan in which we will lower the drug cost of medical treatments such as insulin pads and EpiPens, which most of you do own. And number five, I want to dramatically increase the spending on education, because I know firsthand what education can do for you. I understand the importance of education, and I want you all to succeed in life and receive a higher education that you deserve. It is time for this country to have a brand-new face representing it, dare I say, a female face. So vote me, Elizabeth Warren, and I will not only restore transparency within the government, but I will bridge the divide on this politically divided country and make it whole once again. Thank you.
First question from the audience comes from Kendall.
What are your plans to reform the education system in this country?
Thank you so much for your question, Kendall. I briefly touched on this in my speech that I just said, but I want to dramatically increase the spending and the funding for education. I want free public college for all. I want to eliminate the discriminatory barriers that stand between low-income families and minority groups such as African-Americans and Hispanics. I want to implement a universal and free pre-K, so that we're starting kids at a young age with an education that will build them and prepare them for elementary school, middle school, high school, and eventually college, so that they can succeed. I also want to implement free college, and on top of this, I want to implement a plan that will eventually eliminate student loans and student debt, because that is a burden that most people are going to face. How many of you are seniors here? Alright, I got a couple. Are all of you planning to go to college after high school? Yeah? You are going to face extreme amounts of student debts if the plan stays as such, and so I want to eliminate that for you so that you all can succeed in life and do what you need to do, and thank you for your question.
We will now be taking a second question from the audience. Does anyone have a question for Senator Warren?
So during the Democratic debates on television, you refused to respond to the question of whether you would raise taxes to the middle class, which includes most of us here. So what would your answer to that be?
I will not, under any circumstances, raise taxes on the middle class. I actually plan to impose taxes on the wealthy and the elite, such as the real corporate tax that I plan on imposing, which would affect companies that make about $100 million in revenue, companies such as Amazon. Has anyone, has everyone here heard of Amazon? Am I right to assume that? Alright. Amazon, as of 2019, received $10 billion, that's billion with a B, in revenue and has paid zero federal income taxes. That is just inhumane and unacceptable, so we need to change that. So what I propose is on companies that have a net revenue of above $100 million or more, they will receive a 7% tax on every dollar above that $100 million. As regards to the ultra-millionaires of the country, the top 0.1%, which is none of you, they will receive about a 2% tax on every dollar that they have above $50 million and a 6% tax on every dollar they have above $1 billion of household income. So no, I will not be raising the taxes on you, the middle class, because that is just inhumane and unjust, and I do not stand for that. Thank you.
Senator Sanders, you have two minutes to respond to my opening question.
So to start, I would first like to thank all of you for coming to this town hall meeting and learning about the candidates in our campaign, because honestly, at the end of the day, it's your vote that's going to be securing the future of our nation, so thank you. But to answer the question, yes, it's true, there are political divisions in America. However, my team has created an agenda and policies that the majority of people can agree to. Despite your political party, your nationality, race, gender, ethnicity, the majority of people in America can agree to my policies. For instance, I talk about increasing the national minimum wage to a living wage of $15 an hour, and by a show of hands, how many people would be opposed to making more money for the time that you put in? And if you look around, this is a pretty diverse crowd, and yet this is still an issue that we can all agree to. Secondly, I talk about criminal justice reforms, and despite your political party, it doesn't change the fact that the U.S. has the most people incarcerated and imprisoned, the majority of these people being from minority groups. This clearly calls for a second look at our criminal justice system and the way it works. Lastly, I may have differing views on how to handle the issue of gun safety than Republicans do, however, there's no doubt in my mind that when yet news breaks about yet another mass shooting, yet more of our children innocently dying, mothers, fathers, sisters, brothers dying, hearts around America are broken, and therefore, I think it's time for us to come together as a country and make these gun safety laws instead of sitting back and listening to the NRA. So all in all, people may not agree with me as a person, yet I think it only makes sense to come together in unison with laws that we can all agree to despite your political party, and that's not something that you're going to find with the rest of the candidates sitting up front. So thank you, and vote Bernie Sanders for president of 2020.
The first question for Senator Sanders comes from Vincent LaCor. Are you here?
How is Medicaid for All a suitable replacement for private health insurance, seeing how many in the U.S. prefer private health insurance over a government option?
So thank you for your question. So I think people can only prefer what they've experienced, and therefore, we've only experienced private health insurance since we don't have universal health care. I think people can't prefer having a single payer for health care if they've never experienced it, but I think health care should be a human right, and regardless of what people prefer, I think everyone should be able to access it. Trump is taking 60,000 people off of their health care, just for what reason? Maybe he'll talk about it later, but honestly, I think that everyone should be granted health care despite your religion, ethnicity, your income. Thank you.
The second question comes from Nathan.
So Canada has a lot of problems with its free health care, like high taxes and long hospital waiting lines. Why do you think it's going to work in the U.S. where the population is a lot higher?
Thank you for your question. So it is true, we do have a higher population than Canada, but we're also paying 10 times more on the same medicine than Canadians are, and also, due to our higher population, we do have the resources such as more hospitals, doctors, technology, and medicine, so I don't see that being an issue, but if it does come up, we as a government can, and the people can come together and create these organizations and programs to combat this, because studies have shown that just from universal health care, we can save billions of dollars and over 6,000, 60,000 lives, so thank you for your question.
Governor Weld, you have two minutes to respond to my opening question.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming out today. I think it's very important that we as Americans should hold town halls like these regularly because at the end of the day, you guys have the power and you guys have the voice, which it should be that how, that's how our nation was founded. So the first thing I would do when I step into the Oval Office was, it's going to be to unite the country again, because right now, we are divided. Say what you want, but our current president has divided the nation because people just can't get behind him, because he villainizes the common man, and that's why I'm here. I'm here to help the common man. How many times have you seen President Trump hold a town hall like this? Not a rally where he talks to only his supporters, but Democrats, Republicans, Libertarians, Independents. How many times have you seen him hold these type of town halls? I don't, I can't think of one, and that's because he doesn't do those things, and that's because he doesn't want to have a conversation. When I'm president, I will regularly hold town halls like this in order to hear what you want, see what you want, see what you want, see what you want. I want everyone to, I want everyone to tell me what they want, because at the end of the day, you guys are the ones I'm working for. I work for you. I don't work for myself, and you don't work for me. I'm here to help you and make decisions based on what you want, because that's why you voted me into office. Thank you. Vote William Weld for the president nominee, 2020.
The first question for Governor Weld comes from Letitia. Are you here?
I'd like to ask if you have a plan to make college more affordable?
Thank you. Now, at this very time, I don't have a plan set in stone for college, because I am of the belief that someone doesn't necessarily have to go to college to be successful. My plan is really to help and invest in trade schools and vocational schools, things after high school that don't require me to go into $100,000 in debt, because I think that's a big issue. We have a kind of a bad stigma to the idea that we have to go to college, when that's not necessarily the case, and that's why in my administration, we are going to promote and push as much trade schools and vocational schools as possible for people who really don't know what they want to do after high school. Thank you.
Second question comes from Robert Bernard, oh, just Robert. Oh. Nikita.
Since you are so far behind in delicate support, why should we seriously consider you as a candidate in this election?
Thank you. I believe that in the 2016 election, President Trump was very far behind on polls, and he was very far behind on any delicate support, because no one thought that it was possible for someone like him to win, and at the time, he blew people's minds. He was able to win the election, and I believe that I can do that too. I believe that, first of all, I follow the laws unlike Trump. I believe that I'm a better choice for a Republican, because President Trump has changed his party affiliation five times. He's not loyal to the Republican Party, and also, he doesn't care about anyone else but himself. I'm here to care for everyone in this room, everyone across the entire nation, and that is why I'm a better choice for the Republican nomination than Trump will ever be. Thank you.
President Trump, you have two minutes to respond to my opening question.
Hi, guys. I'm Donald Trump, and I think our democracy is already great. Do you want to know why? Because promises were made and promises were kept. America's economy is at an all-time high, with Hispanic as well as African-American unemployment rates being the lowest it has ever been. The current unemployment rate is only 3.5%. With the growth of America's economy, we have been able to make sure that there are more jobs for Americans, specifically 12.5 million jobs, as well as increase the take-home pay for common Americans. We have enforced our border security and made sure that everyone feels safe within their own communities. Next, we have made health bills more transparent, so people know how much money they're paying to the hospitals. We're lowering the price of prescription drugs, so people can afford the medication they need. Next, I'm banning, I'm passing a ban on late-term abortion, because whether you're a Democrat, a Republican, or an independent, a life is a life. Next, I'm enforcing school choice, so every parent has a say in their child's education. When I was inaugurated into office four years ago, power was not moved from one party to another, but instead to you, the American people, to every parent that dreams for their child, and every child that dreams for their future. I say these words to you. I'm with you. I will fight for you, and I will win for you. Keep America great. Vote Donald J. Trump.
Our first question comes from Ruthwick.
Since you have taken office in 2017, the debt of the United States has risen 4.78 trillion, around a little more than half of Obama, in half the amount of years. Your tax cuts are expected to drive that number higher. How do you plan to counteract this increase?
The way I'm counteracting this increase is by what I'm doing right now. Our economy is the greatest it has ever been. We have increased the take-home pay for common Americans everywhere. We have made sure that health care providers are being transparent, and people know how much money they are paying. We have made sure that African-American as well as Hispanic and minorities everywhere are getting jobs. We've made 12.5 million jobs available within the United States. So that's how we're making our economy better. Thank you.
Our second question, our second question comes from Henry Chen.
So, Mr. Trump, what has been your biggest accomplishment during these last four years, and why is this accomplishment unique to your presidency?
Okay, so I think my biggest accomplishment has been the wall. We have made sure that security within the United States is the tightest it has ever been. In Texas alone, 1.25 million people were arrested as illegal immigrants, and 600,000 of them were charged with felonies. With this wall, we are preventing people like that from coming within the United States, and we're making immigration a better experience, so that we have the proper people within the United States. Thank you.
I will now be asking each candidate a second question. They will have one minute to respond, starting with Mayor Buttigieg. If elected, what would be the first problem you would try to solve after you have been inaugurated as president in January? Mayor Buttigieg, you have one minute.
Alright, so to answer this question, I want to look towards the future a little bit. So how old are you? 16-years-old. How old are you? 16. How old are you? 16. How old are you? Come back. Yeah. 15. So in 30 years, hopefully, you guys will still be around. Hopefully, you'll be getting a job, raising a family, traveling, seeing the world. It doesn't matter. You'll be here. Now, I've already mentioned that everyone here is above 70, and 30 years, they won't be, let's be honest. And the world's top scientists are saying that if we don't act right now to address climate change, we're not going to have another 30 years too. I'm 38. I'm going to go through this with you. I understand the severity of the problem, and that's why, if I'm elected president, the first thing I'll do is rejoin the Paris Climate Corps. I will reinstate the U.S. as the premier leader for climate change initiative, and I'll lead through action, not through words. I'll show the rest of the world that the U.S. is still significant. I'll show the rest of the world that the U.S. cares not just for its people, but for all people. I'll also invest in a Green New Deal, which will put billions of dollars into clean energy infrastructure, and ideally would eliminate carbon emissions within the U.S. by 2050, because again, we lead by example. Not only would this help our environment, not only would this help our planet, but it would help our economy. It would create millions of jobs for middle-class Americans such as yourselves. It would make it safer to live in cities. It would make your, it would make going outside more pleasant, because the air you'd be breathing in would literally be poisoning your lungs. I'm looking out for the future. I'm looking out for you. I'm looking out for the planet. I'm looking out for America. So vote Pete Buttigieg, 2020, if you want what's best for this country now and 30 years from now. Thank you.
Vice President Biden, you have one minute.
Thank you. So the first problem that I would address is this problem with our healthcare. It is a fundamental right that every single American sitting here today have access to affordable healthcare. This means that when you get a broken foot, you get an illness, the government is going to be there to support you along the way. That you can trust the government to be there to protect you. I want you to imagine, under the unfortunate circumstance that is sadly very common today, that one of your family members gets terminal illness. My own son recently actually passed away due to brain cancer. For a government to deny you health coverage, which Trump wants to do, for a pre-existing condition you had no control over, how is this a government, a democracy, that works for the people? I am going to fight to not discriminate against pre-existing conditions. I'm going to fight to lower your costs for healthcare, lower deductibles, copay, lower drug prices. And in the end of the day, I will fight for you to have that cheap healthcare when you need them the most. Thank you.
Senator Warren, you have one minute.
After being elected as the first female president in United States history in January, the first problem that I would tackle head-on is corruption, corruption that has occurred under the Trump administration. In plain English, and for those of you that may not know, corruption is the knowing act, the knowingly conducting of some dishonest act that benefits solely one group or one person. Under the Trump administration, only the wealthy, the elite, the large corporations, and himself have benefited. During his time as president, he has granted giant tax breaks to the wealthy and the elite that don't need it. He has fired the former head of the Environmental Protection Agency, the EPA, and replaced him with a cold lobbyist, someone with no regards for the environment. I don't know about you, but I want to live on this planet and continue to live on this planet for as long as I can. He has also granted giant tax breaks to families that can afford private schooling, while the middle class, you, and hundreds and thousands and millions, quite frankly, of college students, past and present, are struggling under the weight of student loan debt. He has even failed to release his tax returns, leaving a muddled image of the corporations that he has encountered and interacted with. Under my proposed plan, I propose to increase the transparency within the government and restore your faith back in the government and so that you know what is going on at all times. I plan to establish a Justice Department task force that will investigate the corruption that has occurred under his administration so that this part in our history, in American history, does not go overlooked. So vote me, Elizabeth Warren, and I will restore the transparency and your faith in the government. Thank you.
Senator Sanders, you have one minute.
So how many of you are planning to go to college after you graduate high school? By show of hands. How many of you are going to pay for your tuition? If you look around, this survey shows how important the issue of affordable college would be to the masses of America. That's why I can promise, as soon as I'm elected as president, I will relieve future students of future student debt by making college more affordable and, in fact, free. America's the land of the free, and students like yourselves cannot be free when they have hundreds of thousands of dollars of debt tied to their name. Students like yourselves cannot be free when you're deterred from going to college just because you can't afford it. With the national average of college costing forty-seven thousand dollars a year, we're wasting talent and prodigies all around the country, and I think it's time to give everyone a more equal opportunity at a more successful life. The tax breaks that Trump is handing out to large corporations equate to over two trillion dollars, in which eighty-three percent of this money goes to the top one percent. This means the top one percent is thriving and profiting off of your student debt. That is why I think it's time to start thinking of the future lawyers, the future scientists, doctors, and teachers of our country. And instead of punishing them, we promote and encourage higher education. Thank you.
Governor Weld, you have one minute.
Thank you. Now, by show of hands, oh, by show of hands, can you guys tell me who here likes being told what to do? Thank you. And now, by show of hands, who likes making decisions for themselves? Now, if you look at this crowd, there's a lot of people here that like making their own choices. And right now, you don't have that choice. You guys have no choices in this nation because the current administration has taken all the power that you had before and pocketed it and kept it for himself because at the end of the day, he's in it for himself. He wants this for the title of the presidency, not because he actually cares for you. The first thing I would do when I step into the Oval Office would be to give power back to you guys, as it should be, as our founding fathers wanted it to be. They believed that the power was invested in the people, not in one singular man. I would start to promote and start to help and make legislation that would protect your individual freedoms and liberties. I would make sure that you guys felt as if you're not being forced to do anything that you don't want to do. I would make sure that you guys would be able to make choices for yourself and make choices to better your life. Because at the end of the day, it's your life. It's not President Trump's life. And the fact that he thinks that he has the right to control it is absurd. And that is what the first thing I would do when I step into Oval Office. Thank you.
And lastly, President Trump, you have one minute.
Unlike these other candidates up here, I would be elected into my second term. And I'm gonna focus on the future, on education. We have made sure that every school district has a vocational school because not every child needs to go to college. You don't want to be in debt for the rest of your life. We have made sure that with these vocational schools, to help out our economy because people getting jobs and getting educated in high school will lead to a better future. At the State of the Union address, I gave fourth grader Janaya Davis an opportunity scholarship. These are scholarships we have for low-income families who don't necessarily have money to send their children to school. Janaya Davis is now able to go to whatever school she wants, no matter the cost. This is gonna help out America greatly. If we are able to send people to these schools, we are gonna boost our economy and make people more able to work. We're increasing jobs, and our economy is greater than it's ever been. And now, with these vocational schools, as well as these scholarships for the low-income families, we are making America only greater. Please make America great again. Vote Donald J. Trump.
I will now be asking the candidates to invite their campaign managers up. I will now be asking each candidate to introduce their campaign manager, starting with Mayor Buttigieg.
All right, I'm Mayor Buttigieg, and this is my stellar campaign manager, Anton Laseroff.
Everyone, vote Pete Buttigieg.
That's right.
Hello, this is my campaign manager, the enchantingly spectacular Hyung Jung Kim.
Hello, everyone. This is my cool campaign manager, Colin Smith.
Hello, everyone. This is my immaculate campaign manager, Maya Smaki.
Hello, everyone. This is my super-duper stupendous campaign manager, Sri Subramanian.
Hi, guys. This is my fantastic campaign manager, Kelsey Mogan.
All right, we will now be taking questions from the audience for any of the candidates. Does anyone have a question for anyone on the stage?
I have a question for William Weld. If you could just speak on your economic policies, that'd be great.
All right, so the Weld, if you can all hear me, the Weld administration, what we would like to do with our economy is to actually continue what is actually going on right now. Although we do differ from Trump in many, many ways, the economy is something that we can both agree on. We can both agree on the fact that the unemployment rate is at an all-time low and the stock markets are doing fantastic. We would like to continue this by implementing more tax cuts and giving states more rights to, giving states of business more rights and more power to actually be able to employ more people and to create more jobs for the country as a whole. At the end of the day, everybody here is affected by the economy in some sort of way. And it's always gonna be better if more people have jobs. So I do think that what is going on today is fantastic, and we should continue how it's playing out. Thank you.
Does anyone have a question for Mayor Buttigieg?
I have a question for Mr. Sanders. Why do you think that minorities are the main people that are imprisoned?
I think that we have a racist, or Bernie thinks that we have a racist criminal justice like program at the current moment. It targets minorities, especially with things like Mayor Bloomberg's stop-and-frisk policy, which it, the policy itself wasn't necessarily racist, but the way that it was enforced. Obviously, minorities were disproportionately targeted with this. And we feel as though we need to reform the current criminal justice, like the way that it is currently, through numerous reforms, through Bernie's administration.
We'll now take another question. Please state your name before you ask the question.
My name is Naman Rajaguru. This question is for Mr. Buttigieg. We know that to deal with the illegal immigrant issue, Mr. Trump has started to build a wall along the border of the United States and Mexico. What is your take or solution in this issue?
All right, so illegal immigration is an issue within this country. I don't personally approve of Trump's border wall. I think that's an ineffective strategy, especially since seventy percent of illegal immigrants come from overstayed visas. So that is literally completely irrelevant to a wall. My personal policy on immigration is that we shouldn't open up the border, like some of my compatriots believe, but we should be a little bit more relaxed. People come to America looking for a better life. And we shouldn't necessarily put them in cages where they're locked up as little kids just because they're looking for a better life. But we should still maintain the integrity of our nation and its borders. So due to that, I believe it would be in our best interest to not, would be to lower the punishments that illegal immigrants get. Instead of making it a criminal violation, make it a civil violation. That way, we can still maintain our border security. We can still maintain our integrity as a nation. But we're not gonna be inhumane to people looking for a better way of life within our country. We're not gonna de-incentivize immigration as a whole. So thank you for your question. It really is an excellent question, an important one to consider. But I think my immigration policy is way better than Trump's and anyone else's, for that matter. So, Pete Buttigieg, 2020.
Does anyone have a question for Senator Warren or Vice President Biden?
My name is Vincent Pegluci, and I have a question for Senator Bernie Sanders. How do you see getting healthcare to all Americans? If, who's gonna be paying for this? The people would be paying for this healthcare. Taxes, taxes, taxes would skyrocket. If you go into Canada, you see the tax differences skyrocketing on anything because everyone is getting this free healthcare. And also, how do you see this working?
So the current issue with our tax code is that the top one percent is able to find loopholes. And that's why the middle class is forced to have this burden of paying a majority of the taxes. But with Bernie's reforms, we're actually going to be paying less taxes. It's just that the one percent will be paying their part, their share of the taxes that they need to. And a lot of that money will be funneled into this new healthcare program, Medicare for All. So I think that the reason why people are so opposed to this because they feel as though the middle class will be taxed more. But in the end, they'll actually be taxed less, and it's the one percent that'll be paying their part.
Does anyone have a question for President Trump or Vice President Biden?
My question's for Trump, and I wanna know what you're gonna do about the thousands of tax dollars that are being put into sanctuary cities.
Thank you for your question. I mean, we just have so much to do right now. I mean, there's a lot with our debt and a lot of this money that has to be handled and reallocated different places. As far as the sanctuary cities and immigration, our administration has done so much to help with that and combat these issues. As our other candidates talked about, Pete Buttigieg had a little bit of criticism for our wall. But as far as our immigration policies and the wall, seventy percent of apprehensions have decreased since our wall's been put into place. And as far as the money aspect of it, we've been doing an amazing job with this economy. So I appreciate your question. Thank you, and keep America great. Vote for Trump.
Does anyone have a question for Vice President Biden?
My name is Ben Whitson, and earlier you talked about how healthcare is a human right. When earlier, the Supreme Court of the United States struck down the mandate in Obamacare saying that people had to have health insurance. So who should I believe, you or the entire Supreme Court of the United States?
So you can go into a lot of, so you're, I know you, Ben Whitson, you're very, you know the technicals, right? But what happens with healthcare is that when I'm fighting for affordable healthcare, I'm just, you still have your private option with healthcare. So it's no concern that I'm impeding upon any individual rights, if you're concerned about that. And when you're talking about me versus the Supreme Court, no, I'm not against the Supreme Court. I've never been against the Supreme Court. What I'm just saying is that we have to start to prioritize the health of our Americans. When you do get hurt, you get an illness, you have to be, the government has to be there to support you along the way. And for the fact that the Supreme Court never stated saying that we should abandon every single American who's being hurt right now. No, we are Americans, and we are supposed to treat each other with respect and dignity. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for attending. Going to remind you that you will be voting for one Democratic nominee and a Republican nominee. Thank you all for coming. That's the end of the period.